Caught up on that.
It has started.
Great, thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Brandywine School District Board of Education Regular Meeting on Monday, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Tonight, we are live in the BHS Auditorium with a Zoom broadcast. Ms. Korbinski, may I please have a roll call?
Mr. Skorabat.
Here.
Ms. Pidgen. Mr. Ackerman. Ms. Gordon. Mr. Heller. Reverend Perry. Kimberly Stock. Five present, two absent.
Thank you. And every board member's microphone on? Tried a little switch. Tap yours, Kristen. Okay. Ralph and Kim, maybe? While we're addressing a couple of microphone issues, at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Pidgen to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before I entertain any motions to the approve the agenda, I would like to amend amended tonight's agenda to add to item eight under Personnel Matters, we'll be adding item B, Employee Matter twenty-two dash zero one, and adding item eight C, Employee Matter twenty-two dash zero two. And with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda. I have a motion, Mr. Ackerman, second, Ms. Stock. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bear with us just a moment. I think we'll proceed here till we get a couple of microphones. Just we'll just, if any members of the board have any questions or comments, just project. We'll begin with our high school reports, and I'd like to welcome back our student leaders for those high school reports. First up, we have Ethan Honda Shane, Brandywine High School. And if you could come down to the podium all the way up front, we would appreciate it.
Good evening, board members. The fall season of Brandywine just finished, and we had a very successful season. Our volleyball team finished their season with a record of nine wins and six losses. Our soccer and field hockey teams both had very successful seasons culminating in playoff games that took place last Monday. Our football team, marching band, and cheerleaders just finished their seasons with a blowout victory forty to zero on a football game against Concord. Our cross-country team was last to finish with a wet, cold, and muddy state meet this Saturday at Brandywine Creek State Park. We are now in the midst of the winter athletic season, and our students are excited to get involved with their winter sports. Our fall play clue was just presented, and both of the casts had amazing performances. We are very excited to see what they do in the spring play. Our student government has also been very involved in acts. Our class governments have had a car wash, candy grams, and a fall festival, and have many exciting things planned soon. Our student council just completed a dog pound shirt fundraiser and are now moving on to collaborate with teachers and administration to build a better school environment and community, and to help fix issues that we have seen with the students returning to school after a long time away. We are also attempting to plan a blood drive for later this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan.
Ethan.
Couple of questions.
You forgot to mention that you were also selected as the Delaware Online Athlete of the Week. Congratulations.
So I mentioned last, I don't think you were here with us last week. You had a prior engagement, but I had made a mention about the activities of Joint Student Council and understanding that it's not kind of as it was last year or the year prior. So I just want to encourage you and the other students here tonight to maybe exchange information, communicate with the other student leaders through the other high schools to kind of share issues and concerns that are that are going on. And, you know, as we work to figure out some sort of another version of the Joint Student Council, or just, you know, having communications between the three schools, I think is very important. And I hope you guys will continue to do that throughout the remainder of the school year.
Yeah. Ethan, one one more question before you go, and this question is in memory of a very beloved board member, Joe Brumskill. Do you have a goal for your blood drive in terms of the number of students?
We don't have a goal yet. We're still trying to set a date and kind of move on from there. So we're just trying to get it organized at this point, but we'll we're certainly set a goal at some point soon.
Well, blood drives were always near and dear to Mr. Brumskill's heart, and he would have asked that question had you been here today. So thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you, Ethan. Next, next up, we have Concord High School, Maya Reeves and Alicia Garcia.
Good evening, board members. My name is Maya Reeves, and I'm from Concord High School.
And I'm Lindsay Pearson, Secretary.
We have just finished the first marking period period, and our fall sports seasons have come to a close. Our teams have been working hard since August, and we are proud of each and every one of them. Almost all of our teams had winning seasons. Our volleyball, field hockey, and cross-country teams even won their conference championships. Way to go, Concord. We would also like to recognize our very own Coach K for being inducted into the Delaware Sports Hall of Fame. This event was attended by Mr. Mark Mayer and multiple staff members.
As for the end of the marking period, we are proud of each and every one of our students for demonstrating diligence throughout the past couple of months. It's been a huge adjustment from online schooling last year, and we would like to applaud both students and teachers for a successful grading period.
For Concord's Halloween, we held a costume contest on Friday, the twenty-ninth, the last day of school before the holiday. Many kids came dressed in their unique costumes for a chance to win a prize for best group, scariest costumes, funniest costumes, most creative, and cutest. There were lots of laughs and photos taken and excitement shared by our Concord students for this fun special occasion.
At the end of October, our avid classes had a contract signing event where members pledged to continue to serve their communities and be respectful diligent members of society. Student families were invited to this event in support of the avid students becoming organized leaders and modeling a good example to their peers. Many people in our graduating class have been a part of avid since freshman year and have improved their grades, resourcefulness, and their leadership skills. We are very thankful to our teachers involved with our avid program for their role in teaching our students to become the strong young adults they are today.
As November came along, we started off the month by having our interact club, International Honor Society members participate in multiple volunteering events during our month of service. We have hosted a drive for Delaware Humane Society where student volunteers collected donation in the lunchroom. We also have done a winter coat drive for Sunday Breakfast Mission and flags for military veterans and first responders. We honored two of our own staff members, Trooper Damian and Nurse Weaver, on Thursday at the Flags of Heroes. We thank them for their service to others in the contribution to Concord.
Recently, many students and community members have attended stockings for soldiers packing sessions for this upcoming holiday season. As the month goes on, we will continue to give back to our community both in and out of school. From what we've seen, our classmates have done a wonderful job in giving thanks as we progress through this month of giving. As a council, our team has many events planned for our students in the near future and hopes to continue with our fun productive school climate. Thank you, and we'd like to note if the board has any questions.
No questions, but I just I'm really grateful to hear all the activities and comments that you shared about service and giving back to the community. That's really great to hear. Thank you for that. And next up, we have Mount Pleasant High School, Catherine Farball and Lily Holmes.
Good evening. My name is Catherine, and this is Lily. We are representatives to Mount Pleasant High School. In the past month, Mount held a successful Halloween celebration. In the Mount community, it is tradition for the seniors to dress up for the annual Halloween costume contest. We're excited to see the large number of seniors who chose to take part in this fun tradition. The festivities were not only for seniors due to the Mount Pleasant blue gold Halloween candygram. Both the costume contest and the candygram sale promoted Mount pride and helped students get into the holiday spirit. A few weeks ago, the senior class officers organized a creative drone drone group photo for the graduating class of two thousand twenty-two. While it was a chilly morning to be standing outside in the football field, the seniors rallied together and were organized into a large twenty-two signifying their graduation year. This photo is a perfect example of how Mount students are staying positive and creating new traditions with COVID regulations and guidelines. If interested, you can view the photo on Mount Pleasant's newsletter, Facebook, and Instagram page. This upcoming week, the Mount community is holding many exciting events. This week, Mount is having their college application week. This time of the year is immensely busy for the seniors as they complete and work on their college applications. The counselors at our school have made their schedules open throughout the week to provide their help and support to the seniors throughout this challenging process. The seniors are immensely appreciative of the counselor's time and expertise in the application process. In addition, the blue and gold is holding another fundraiser this week. This time, it's a hat fundraiser. Students can pay one dollar to have permission to wear a hat. Typically, wearing hats prohibited, but the administration has made an exception to help support the blue and gold club. This week also marks the production of our school play, Love Sick. This particular performance showcases nine different scenes and various couples and their love lives. Due to COVID, the drama department wanted to be considerate of the health of students and their families as we head into Thanksgiving break. So the show will be recorded tonight and will premiere virtually this Friday, this coming Thursday and Friday. Currently, the music department is holding its annual fruit sale in which music students can sell citrus fruits and other goodies to teachers, families, and friends. This fundraiser helps support the music department and future field trips. If interested in supporting, there's more information on Mount's website. The students are feeling hopeful and excited as we enter the second marking period and and as winter sports begin. We look forward to bringing you our continued monthly updates about the Mount community and appreciate the district's ongoing support in our efforts to build a positive school year. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
Sounds like a busy week of activities coming up. Great job. Thank you. And certainly, as always, our students are welcome to stay and join us, but we know you have commitments and schoolwork to do, so if you choose to leave, that would be perfectly fine. And next on our agenda, another special special presentation, and I can't say that I recall the last time a sitting governor has joined us for a school board meeting. So Governor Carney, welcome. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much, John, for the opportunity to be here in this beautiful renovated auditorium. It looks wonderful. I was complimenting John Reed on his great work as as we came in. I appreciate the opportunity again to be here with with Jim Simmons, who, as you know, is a former Brandywine School District employee and former principal of Mount Pleasant High School. Both of us have have connections to the district. Many of you might know my father moved to Delaware from Pennsylvania in nineteen fifty-five to teach at the, what was then the Mount Pleasant Junior High School. I guess originally a high school, then junior high school, and now Mount Pleasant Elementary School. Spent many years in the old Wilmington Public School District and then finished his career here, working in the Brandywine School District with special and federal programs. We're here tonight to talk about a concept that that we've been working on for several years now, actually with Jim's predecessor, someone else who's close to the Brandywine School District, Dr. Al Green, who preceded Jim in his position and who actually was instrumental in coming up with the idea that we're going to talk about tonight, which is the Wilmington Wilmington Learning Collaborative. Jim's going to run through a series of slides, and we'll certainly be willing to entertain your questions. When I was Lieutenant Governor, I served Lieutenant Governor for eight years. As you remember, during that period of time, it was at a time when all the testing assessments that were being done in schools across our state actually had some consequences in terms of ratings that schools and school districts had, et cetera. And one of the things that the the test did was to disaggregate the the scores so that you could know how different groups of students were doing. And one of the things that we learned was that our our students from disadvantaged backgrounds were not doing as well as as the other students. And so I started a program that we called Models of Excellence in Education. And we invited, we invited applications from districts across our state to show us what they were doing to help improve student achievement. And during that period of time, you know, we focused on, I I was exposed to Dr. Susan Bunting, who was the Assistant Superintendent there at the Indian River School District, and they really did a tremendous job of reaching all their students with special programs. Well, you know that one of the reasons that I asked Dr. Bunting to comment and be the Secretary of Education during my first four years, she's decided to retire, and we've actually offered that position to to another Brandywine School District, former Superintendent Markovik, and and he's going to join us in January. As I think of the challenges that we face in our state, chief among them is to make sure that we have a strong thriving economy, because if if we do, people have jobs and will be able to support themselves and their families. And fundamentally, that really depends on our ability to have a first-class education system. And Brandywine, of course, is one of the stellar districts in our state. But we're not, we're leaving too many children behind, what I call the opportunity gap, and that's why we championed additional funding for schools with higher numbers of students with disadvantaged backgrounds, English learners, and and the like. And already, the districts across our state and the schools have been putting money to 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 good use. We know that the children who live within the the boundaries of the city of Wilmington are losing out on some of those opportunities, and we need to do a better job. We've already been working now with the Christina School District. In their schools, they had five at one point. Stubbs, Bancroft, on the east side, Palmer and South Wilmington, Pulaski and Byer on the west side. Working with the district through teachers and principals, we've consolidated those schools to Bancroft, first to eighth grade. School of Bancroft on the east side, we're building a brand-new school there. And a Byer on the west side, which is being kind of renovated as we speak. Stubbs was converted into an early education center and a parents' support center. All this designed to really help lean into the needs of these of these students. But we know that the challenge goes beyond the Christina School District in the city, and so we're we're reaching out to the Brandywine School District and to Red Clay later this week to form what we call the Wilmington Learning Collaborative, which will really give intense focus and a separate board to really lean into the needs of these children. And tonight, we're asking you to consider this. You have two schools in the city of Harlan and P S. The parts are very different, and one or the other mayor may not be applicable to this idea, but it certainly addresses will address, and it is intended to address, the levels of student achievement among those children and the backgrounds from which they come. Jim's going to walk you through that, invite him. He's not going to tell you this, but I know he's shopping for votes for his son Jay, who's up to be the athlete of the week in his performance from Mount Pleasant High School, I think against Tatball School, Milford, where he had two touchdowns, I want to say, a couple interceptions, maybe even threw a touchdown. So if you can go online, Jim would appreciate your vote for his son Jay. Thank you, Governor. And that being said, meeting adjourned. Now, we'll we'll wait for a few seconds as we get the slideshow pulled up. Thank you. So first, Governor, thank you for setting the stage, and thank you to the board for having us here this evening for the opportunity to present our education plan. This collaborative is based on a framework that's been successful in other states around our country, and we've adopted it and retrofitted it to apply to the city of Wilmington. Next slide, please. Here are a list of some of the challenges that school districts face, but they're accentuated when you look at the schools that are within our city limits. In Wilmington, as you know, there are four governance structures with those four districts, five if you include a VOTEC at the high school level. The feeder patterns cause disruptions to students' educations for our transient population and our transient families. Here's a real-life example. The current Assistant Principal of Brandywine High School, Byron Murphy, and I became friends because of this very nature. If you if you're not aware, Thirtieth Street is the dividing line oftentimes between Mount Pleasant High School and Dickinson High School. And oftentimes, we would lose kids because they moved a block or two, and so Byron and I would often call each other and say, Jim, you're getting John Carney, you need your support, or John Carney, Mr. Murphy's a really good guy. When you go to Dickinson, make sure you look for him because he'll take good care of you. So we developed that friendship, and we know that that's an important direction that we need to support our kids. It also occurs that as we share information about each other, we know that this impacts each and every student at a different level. But the other thing I add, and the governor touched on it, is that our facilities are of very different standards, and we've addressed some of those in Christina. And obviously, you guys have addressed some of them here, looking at this auditorium since the last time I stood here and presented to our senior class some years ago. Next slide. This slide shows the current teacher retention data for over a three-year period for all of the schools that are within our city limits. And as you can see, all of the schools within the city limits are below the state average. Here's why that's important to me as a former principal. When you can retain teachers, you can create a climate. You also can develop relationships with parents that transcends just that one year. I recall having students where I've had the brother, the sister, the next cousin. And and then if you're really good at it, which I hope that I was, parents would say, if you go to Mount Pleasant, we want you to have Mr. Simmons for science. Here's what it also does for building leaders. When they create professional development around curriculum, when you're continually turning over your staff, you're continually redoing professional development, and the teachers lose the ability to become really good and really knowledgeable at that curriculum. Next slide. So it's our hope that we can create this different structure. I put the big three up top. I put them in alphabetical order so no one felt slighted. And we'll use the MOU process that we currently use, similar to the one we use in Christina around redoing their buildings and some of the things that we're doing in that partnership. In this structure, there would be a trustee partnership board, a small staff, and then the teachers that are of the schools that are decided to participate, and I'll go into that sliding a little more detail later on. The goal of this, though, is to ensure or create an opportunity that decision-making is closest to the people that it impacts, and that's the buildings. Next slide, please. So why would you want to do this? I guess my question would say, my answer to that question would be, let's get on the right side of the history together. This framework provides an opportunity to place a hyper-focus on the challenges that I mentioned earlier. In all of the three district names, roughly eighty-five percent of those districts' buildings do not reside within the city. The districts have to maintain a focus on all of the challenges and issues that are presented in a district. And so I I think it's important for you to hear. We're offering this framework not as a blame game, but as a capacity issue and the ability to help provide a resource to address those capacity issues. Next slide, please. So here's what it could look like. I I think when you think about flexibility, you give the option of what does a typical day look like? What does a typical year look like? And I think the the people making those decisions have the ability to collaborate together to decide what that could look like and be innovative in the way that they think. It gives an opportunity to collaborate across districts. I've often said that in the state of Delaware, and maybe in other states as well, I'm not sure, we've often spent a lot of time fighting to keep butts in seats because of looking at enrollment so that we can drive our district. And so oftentimes, we've kept secrets from each other, not on purpose, but with the intention of keeping those butts in our seats for our district. This gives us an an ability to keep those butts in our seats and work together for the benefit of kids. The other thing I want to make sure that we state about this collaborative and what it looks like is that at no point is this a governance takeover model, and all of the schools will remain in their current district. Next slide. So here are some of the supports that could be offered. So for students, we we addressed that issue that I talked about earlier around that transient population that oftentimes moved. Their education is disrupted. We get a chance to address that. For our educators, we give them the ability to sit at the table in decision-making. I believe I was fortunate when I was here in Brandywine School District because we oftentimes had committees that involved teachers, that they had decision-making, and they felt included, and that things were happening with their support versus things happening to them or for them. It was with them. For our our leaders, we're offering an opportunity for professional development for principals and leaders, and I think it's something that we've all fallen short of in some capacity because of other different needs. Here's why I think that's important. When we look at the mo the data from the mobility surveys, roughly seventy-five percent of the teachers say that they leave either the districts, schools, or professions because of leadership. That speaks to that retention issue as well. And the other part is I think this op, this collaborative gives us the opportunity to create community engagement. The example I used with community engagement, I met with the executive director from the Powell Center last week. He talked about this great relationship that he has with the Brandywine School District. When I talked to Michelle Taylor at United Way, she talks about her great relationship with Christina. By creating this collaborative, I can get United Way, Powell Center, and others to collaborate with all those schools in the city versus having a relationship with just one district. Next slide please. So the, the young man standing behind me and his team has already invested lots of money into, or I, I'll say investments, it's not always money, into some of those problems. And he's willing to do more in terms of, the one I think is the most important is investing into our pre-K and adding additional seats. We talked about creating a common curriculum, willing to take on the cost, the rising cost that that could incur, especially if districts have either have a curriculum that we're not decided on, have a new curriculum, we're not asking them to endure those costs. And then staffing, I think that we've got to look at how we can incentivize teachers to stay and do those extra things, especially if we consider lengthening the day. Alright, next slide please. Here's some other examples that, things that could be included, and, and I'll sum this slide up with the number of nonprofits that are willing to support districts and/or schools again on an individual basis. I think that we have a better chance at, at seeking that support from those nonprofits and creating those different ideas. If it's for a group of schools versus an individual school or individual district who may or may not have a better relationship with some of those nonprofits. Obviously, I'm not going to read all those things to you, but those are some things that we thought about that were possibilities. So as I mentioned earlier, that I would talk about this in a little bit more detail. When we look at the schools that we hope will be a coalition of the willing, we'd create a board of trustees that would include each participating district superintendent and their board member that represents the city. And then there's some other members included, whether we talk about community members, uh, education specialists, folks who have a hyper-focus on the city of Wilmington. That board is important and can make some vital decisions. And again, I'll talk about that in a little second about how we get that worked out, but I've seen it work. Link, excuse me, Mr. Holder just mentioned Joe Brumskill earlier. I've seen what can happen to a school when a board member has a hyper-focus. Joe Brumskill fought for those schools oftentimes above and beyond to say, this is what we need for Harlan right now. And, and again, not to discredit the other board members, the other board members are looking at the totality of the district. Joe said, I'm looking at the totality, and while I'm at it, we're going to make sure we take it to schools in the city as well. There would be a staff that would oversee the day-to-day operations. These titles aren't written in stone. We just put them up as placeholders, but an executive director who would oversee the day-to-day work, someone in talent and, uh, teach, excuse me, teaching and learning to help with those curriculum, curriculum, uh, decisions. Someone in what we would call HR to make sure that we're recruiting and retaining the best teachers for the kids that need us the most right now. Someone to oversee operations. And then one of the things that I, we all know is important that I think we're struggling with to separate versus including is the SEL and, and family engagement. The social emotional learning piece that students and teachers and administrators are struggling with right now. I think that's got to be a very important piece of this puzzle. The last piece that I think is important, or we think is important is the ELT, which is Executive Leadership Team. I talked about it earlier in terms of having teachers at the table, having community members at the table who can share input into where they think that things could impact students at the ground level or at the lowest level, when we mean the building. Next please. So I talked about this one a little earlier in advance because I stopped reading to you. Uh, but here's what it could look like. We could create certain content-specific schools, whether it's STEM, engineering, uh, and again, those decisions would be made in a collaborative effort. Giving a different ability to hire staff to do different things and be creative, whether you decide to put more than one teacher in a classroom. Again, having the flexibility to do all of those things makes a big difference. Next please. How does it get done? I talked about this earlier that I would come back to the slide. We currently have a MOU that we worked out between Department of Ed, O-Gov, and Christina School District, and then a separate one that aligns with or works with the local collective bargaining agreement, in this case the CEA. I think that in order to get this done, there would be an MOU between each of the districts that would have some things in common. And then because there's so, some things that are different in each of the districts collective bargaining agreement, you've got to make sure that some of those things are slightly different, but I think that they have to align. And again, we would be able to talk about how the budgets get worked out between the districts and the collaborative versus the, the additional investments that the, uh, governor's office and the state would be willing to take on. So we're, here's a timeline of what this looks like. We're calling this first year Year Zero. Um, where we're planning having these types of meetings to try to garner support. Hopefully next year would be this first year of the collaborative. The following year, Byer's school that the governor mentioned would be completely renovated and look like a brand new school, even though in the same location. The following year after that, the, the new Bancroft, even though we don't know what the title will be at this point or the name of the building, the new Bancroft would be open. He talked about a dual gen center in the Stubbs building. We're looking to add a second dual gen center on the west side. The following year would be the, the second year of operation, excuse me, third year of operation. And then also opening a third dual generation center because we've seen the importance. Helen Anderson is the executive director through, executive director, excuse me, doing great work over there, working with our parents in our, in our inner cities. And then that last year, hoping that this will align with the decision that comes out of the Reading Consortium. So what does it look like? Before I turn it over to question and answer, we're going to spend the rest of this month in December talking to not only boards, but to community members to garner feedback because we want to create a collaborative environment, not just between the schools that decide to participate, but also with the community as we, as we design this plan. By January, we're asking the boards of those districts to give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down, whether they're willing to participate. Our, our, our word is the coalition of the willing. January and February, we begin to work out on, work on those MOUs and negotiate those and hope to have them finalized by March. Then begin planning, goal-setting with July being the kickoff year. Next slide. Oh, that might, it used to have one that said question and answer. So that's what I just say. So I don't know how much time we're allotted, uh, Mr. President.
Thank you, Jim. Let me just make a, a few things, make a few points. In closing, I realize we talked several times, we mentioned several times the dual gen center, but we didn't explain what that is. In the dual gen center, we have an early childhood education, uh, center on the first floor. And then a parent support center on, on the second floor. The one that's operational right now is at the, the former Stubbs Elementary School, which if you know that area is right down the streets from Howard, uh, VOTEC. It's been very successful so far. We've renovated that building and we're looking to do that, uh, on the west side as well, as you heard Jim say. We've been working with the Christina School District. Uh, Dr. Bunting made a determination early on. That's where our, our efforts needed to, to start. Uh, so John, your father, I met with your father and then Superintendent Holdek about, uh, after the WAC proposal to consolidate, uh, the Christina children or the, the Christina part of the city into the Red Clay School District where that failed. You know, I'd just been elected governor and had to pick up the piece and figure out what to do. And so we've been focusing on Christina and making improvements there, their facilities and what happens in those classrooms and now proposing, uh, a citywide collaborative with Brandywine, hopefully with Red Clay, hopefully. As, as Jim just mentioned, there is the Reading Consortium that's happening right now and their deliberations, uh, members uh, here are, are part of that. This does not prejudge any of that decision-making, but sets the table, we think for a better educational, uh, experience for, for those children, for whatever is decided that way. We're happy to let me close by thanking you again. Thank you for, I've always thought that being on the school board is one of the toughest political jobs, uh, that there is. Um, never has it been harder. And so we appreciate what you do over the last almost two years now of COVID-19. Uh, I can sympathize with all of you, the difficult decisions that have to be made. We're getting better. We're going to continue to get better. We're going to stick together as we do as Delawareans and get through this. And thank you for your role in all of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Governor Carney, for coming up today. I, I know the, the timeline here, um, stretches out and there'll be plenty of time for conversation, but I did want to give the board an opportunity, just maybe for some high-level questions or comments that you would like the governor, uh, and Mr. Simmons to consider as these conversations continue and you know, as the conversation of MOUs develop, um, you know, we can allow a few minutes now to
Yeah, this is intended to be the first step, the introduction into the concept. And so there's going to be a lot of question. We understand that. Jim went through the slides pretty quickly. There's a lot of detail. The devil's always in the detail as well. We're convinced after, and I'm convinced in particular after now four years that the children who entered first grade when I was first elected are now in fifth grade. And they're probably not doing as well as they need to do. And so we need to do better. And I know everybody wants to do that and we've just got to get behind a concept that we can all rally behind and make work.
Did any members of the board want to make a comment?
I just have a, I have a question, uh, for Mr. Simmons. Is, uh, the E-CAP program at P S included in this learning community?
It certainly would be included if that's the, this direction that the board wanted to go in. We're not excluding any building that's in the city limits. So E-CAP, E-CAP, excuse me, would be included.
I have a question. Many years ago, twenty-one years ago now, there was a thing called the Neighborhood Schools Act. Most districts around, uh, Newcastle County put their kids in schools that follow Brandywine did not do that. We actually still have students who come from the city that go to, um, Amity, that go to Mike Shire and Lombardi, in addition to Harlan. Would there be an expectation that our other schools sync the curriculum with the city schools for city children? Or how would that work? Would you want us to funnel the city kids back to Harlan instead of having them in our other schools? Or how, how do you, you know, how do you rectify?
Yeah, that's, that's a question that's, that's been raised. Uh, the first person to raise it was, was Darrell Green when, when I had a conversation with him about it and the way Darrell framed it is if you, right now we have various different curriculums in the city. Some good, not, some, not so good. Um, and so the idea would be to, to, uh, address the issue of people moving from one district to the other, just moving across the neighborhood, uh, that they would be, you know, addressing the same curriculum. The question that came from Darrell is what happens when they go on to high school? I mean, is that going to affect the fact that they came from a different curriculum? Uh, Jim probably has a, a better answer, but we're, we're, we should all be aligned to, to the same standards, right? Whether the curriculum's a little bit different, uh, that I'm sure makes a difference at, at some point, but once you, and, and by the way, the, the students are not necessarily going to the, their feeder pattern school. More so in Brandywine than in Christina and in Red Clay, but in those districts for sure, you can meet with a bunch of eighth graders and they're going to VOTEC, they're choo, choosing into this charter school, they're going to that as opposed to their feeder pattern, which might be Dick Ticket Center or McCain. Jim, you want to?
Well, to your, to your point, I don't know that we would ask those schools to be sent, those students, excuse me, to be sent back to Harlan. But I also think that it's a conversation for us to meet with the folks that know better than us. Because for me to stand here and try to make a decision around that without having input from you wouldn't be wise. Um, so, but I, I think that to your point, you, Brandywine has, and we've had that conversation around not following the Neighborhood Schools Act, which we could argue is why your, your data is better than the other two districts by some amount, right? I don't know that if that's exactly why, um, but I think it's something to look at. The other part I would add around the curriculum is we're not here to say that the curriculum Brandywine's using isn't good. It could be the curriculum of choice that we decide as a collaborative, we're going to use for all the ones that decide to participate. It's not saying throw everything out that you're doing. We're saying let's find the best practices amongst those willing to participate. Have a conversation, come to an agreement and use the one that we deem, meaning the group of us deem is the best for those folks that we need to impact.
Thank you, Governor, so much for this. For me, um, honestly, a tool of problem solving, I think this is very exciting on so many levels. As somebody who's an educator who, um, works at a school with five new students, uh, this is something that's very, very close to my heart. Um, Governor, I know that we've had conversations before about teacher retention and teacher recruitment. And I can see that the numbers, the teacher retention at these schools is, is honestly quite, quite concerning. My concern, of course, at, as an educator, is that I love the parts where teachers are included as part of, I think with the, um, leadership council, like it's always called, I, I think that's amazing. I, I cannot stress enough, um, you know, an emphasis in keeping teachers involved, especially when you're talking about, uh, perhaps a changing curriculum. That's a lot of work for educators. Um, if you're talking about the expectation of additional services that teachers are providing, uh, as, as part of this plan, which is understandable, that there would be some level of compensation that that teachers, uh, with this program can be excited about and, and definitely on more. Um, I, I would hate to see this program turn into something that becomes mandates as opposed to something that's a partnership. And so that, that's, that's the only, uh, word of caution that when I see this, it's, it's a wonderful problem solving. Implementing might be very overwhelming for educators.
Well, there's no question about that. I appreciate those, uh, those comments. We do have in our current MOU with the Christina School District incentives to keep the teachers there. But as Jim said, uh, the reasons teachers leave are, are different. That's not just about the money. It's about the team. It's about the consistency of the team. You know, I, I visited, uh, a suburban elementary school in the Christina School District and there were about twenty teachers around the table for that conversation. More than half of them started, uh, uh, at Byer or Bancroft or Stubbs or, or Palmer. They all had their different reasons for, for leaving, but some of the things that you touched on are things that obviously with teachers involved, uh, you're going to have that as part of the, the problem solving, if you will. That's the whole idea of the collaboration. And to try to get all the districts that, that have schools and children in the city, uh, to be part of that collaboration.
I have one more question. Um, what is the cost to the taxpayer? Like what is the additional cost per student that have you evaluated that?
Yeah, we could do a whole meeting on that, obviously. Uh, there's a lot of money going into the schools and the children right now. When you count, when you include Title One, you include our opportunity funding, which ramps up over the next several years pursuant to of the agreement that we had with the ACLU and the NWA CP with the suit that was brought against the state. And so there are specific targets that we have to meet with opportunity fund. As you probably know, that's funding that goes to, to schools based on the number of uh, low-income students and English learners. And it's been very helpful in addressing. And we'll be able to, uh, fund some of the things that you saw up on the board. We're also looking at making additional investments to add some of the early childhood, uh, spots. Um, some other things to help with the teacher retention. But again, you know, it's not intended to be a mandate. And we're not here to say it's going to be exactly like this. We're saying this is what the collaborative framework looks like. We want, we want Brandywine to be part of it, whatever way you as a board sees fit. You will be part of it and part of the operational board through the superintendent and the member of the board. And then we're going to roll up our sleeves and go to work for these children.
Um, just a couple of comments. I know there's going to be more time to, to drill down questions. Um, and these are some things that I've said to you privately as well. Um, you know, my time as a parent in this You know, my time as a parent in this district and on this school board, you know, I, I've seen the great work that happens in our schools every day. I have seen the blood, sweat and tears, the passion that our teachers put into their work. And unfortunately, that doesn't always translate into favorable test scores. You know, in looking at the challenges on the, through slide two, you know, I, I think in part of the conversation should be addressing and putting in some of those investments into some of the external challenges that affect our students, you know, societal issues, you know, crime, poverty, parental involvement, all those things I think contribute to student successful outcomes. And I think there'll be more time to talk about that as well. Another slide mentioned participation. And kind of I'd like to see some sort of timeline, some tangible metrics that, that this can be measured for success, where maybe we can, you know, double down on the program or expand it to other schools within all of the districts. Or some hard metrics that, you know, we would really need to change course if it's clearly something's not working. And as any kind of board is developed, you know, as we talk about community participants and education experts, you know, selecting people that, that have proven track records of success and how that can be applied. You know, but I think there definitely will be a lot to talk about. And, you know, I think you've given us a lot to digest and talk about here this evening. So, thank you.
All great suggestions. Thanks very much.
Governor, just a, a few comments as well. First, I, I do believe that we have to look at what we've done in the city and how we need to do something different. Sitting here, I, I kept thinking about the, the Wayne Gretzky quote. Right? You miss 100% of the shots you don't take. We do need to come together around our kids. And I have to first say thank you for those opportunity funds. They have made a huge impact. And the support, again, as Mr. Ackerman was saying, because of our approach around the Neighborhood Schools Act, we, we have city students across multiple schools in our district. And I just want to advocate that that opportunity funds continue to support those students who would be living in the city, but not necessarily in the Wilmington Collaborative. There are many things that we're going to have to work through. I am a little nervous, you know, when I see two educators in the classroom. Don't get me wrong, I would love to see that. But knowing the pool of available educators and the depletion of that pool this year, you know, how do we ensure that we're being fair and equitable and providing the resources to our city students at the same time, remembering that we have other students and those needs have to be met. And finding that, that balance and being creative in that attraction and then the retention of highly qualified, very effective, and I'll go a step beyond educators with hearts for kids. And I know we have some champions even here in the audience this evening who are ready to roll up the sleeves to do the work that it takes to recruit those kinds of individuals. And I, I look forward to the discussions that are in the weeks and months to come. I think the board would be advisable that we schedule a workshop around this where we can invite Mr. Simmons and maybe Mr. Sheehan back to engage in conversations after we've had some time to mull over all the pieces that we saw tonight in the PowerPoint. To have some individual discussions amongst ourselves so that we can take a very serious look at, at this opportunity.
Thank you very much. And I just, for the record, would like to say it's my own view that Brandy, Brandywine's response to the Neighborhood Schools Act was the best and the most effective. And my guess is that if we went and looked at the actual results, that they would be borne out and the achievement levels of those, of your students. We know what, we know what the achievement levels of, of your students in the city's schools that are part of your district are. We know what they are in the rest of the district. Jim mentioned, the rest of the city, Jim mentioned the fact that in response to Mr. Ackerman's question, that in many ways, the district could be a leader with respect to curriculum and, and other services as well. And I think that's something to think about. We certainly appreciate your openness and willingness to, to hear us out and to because as you say, doing nothing is not, is not an option. Thank you very much.
I, I look at the timeline and one thing that does concern me is that there's, it's a very short timeline in terms of.
Unless you're governor with three years left from your term.
Understand. But I think that the concern that, that I'm, I'm coming to is that you're still at the Reading Consortium with kind of the sort of Damocles hanging over the city and all the districts. I think I'd be more comfortable if they adopted this as their recommendation.
So that would be great too. But in our view, you know, we've heard that from my board, if you will, which is, which was the legislature. And they were very hesitant to do something that would prejudge their work on, on the commission. This doesn't do that. Arguably, this sets the table for whatever decisions they decide to make. Some of which, as governor, I would support and some of which, you know, frankly, that I've heard of, that, that, that I won't support. But whatever they are, you know, part of the reason arguably that the WEA proposal didn't pass muster at the Red Clay ultimately in the Delaware State Senate was because the facilities and the costs that are associated with bringing those facilities in Christina up to standard were great. Well, guess what? We found out that that's true. And that's why we're on the last couple of years, making those investments and getting it to a place where people can't say that, that the facilities are first class. What's happening in the classroom? So much better. Student achievement, so much better. We've got a lot of work to do still. But to your point about what's happening there, this proposal, in our view, is way of not wasting any more time, but using our time productively to put in better processes and better education for these children and better facilities.
Thank you, Governor. I think a workshop is a great idea, Mr. Holder. That we can kind of vouch out some of these questions and follow up with the governor's office and Mr. Simmons. But thank you again, Governor. Thank you, Mr. Simmons, for coming out and sharing this information. We will definitely have more to follow.
Thank you again for having us. Don't forget to vote, vote for Jason.
All right, Ms. McIntyre, you get the distinguished honor of following the governor. But we're excited to hear about the employee recognition of the best of Brandywine.
Thank you very much, President Sprobot, to esteemed members of the board, those joining us in the audience tonight, as well as those viewing online. Again, I am Delicia McIntyre, the Director of Human Resources. And I have the distinct privilege of continuing what we started last month where we announced our district winners for our Teacher of the Year for Brandywine School District, as well as our Educator Support Professional of the Year. And the additional honor of announcing our Teacher of the Year, who went on to win the State Teacher of the Year competition. Tonight, we're going to continue with four additional presentations. And I would like to invite our other administrator in human resources, Mr. Hakima Wicker, to come up and assist me, as well as our first building principal tonight, Mr. Keith Roth from Brandywine High School. As we are going to allow Mr. Roth to give some comments and to tell how his educator support professional for his school, Brandywine High School, has contributed and done above and beyond types of activities to support the high school. At this time, would you all help me please to congratulate and welcome up to the podium, Mr. Byard Givens? Right on up. Mr. Givens, Mr. Wicker will present you with your awards from the district. We love your shirt, by the way. Go Saint Brink. And Mr. Roth, I'd like to invite you to give some comments.
We're good. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to, to recognize frankly, one of the most rewarding friendships, acquaintances, work partners that I have had the pleasure of developing over the last, oh, I guess, multiple buildings, right? There are two different buildings together. We're at Mount Pleasant and then here at Brandywine. And I don't know, probably 18 years or so. 2003 to now. And I, I would tell you that, that the reason our building functions, it's because of people like Byard Givens, but especially because of Byard Givens. Byard is, is literally the grease that makes the machinery work. Without his contributions, the machinery doesn't work as it should. The reason we're in such a, a beautiful, clean facility that students get to enjoy every day. Reason our classrooms are as beautiful as they are. The reason we have what we need to function throughout the day. There's not a time that I can recall that I have ever not said, "Byard, where's this? Where's that? Could we have, you know, this in a classroom?" That it doesn't magically appear faster than I can finish asking it. If there's anyone I know that I can count on for the running of our building on a daily basis, it's Byard Givens. And so it is absolutely my privilege to congratulate you as our Building Educational Support Professional of the Year. I want to give you this small token of our appreciation. Well, pass them on to that someone special at home before they die. And, and then, you know, because, because frankly, and you and I both know this, she's a part of your success as well. Many times we've walked in together in the morning as you, you're coming to work. And I know that she is right there supporting what, what you do on a daily basis. So, thank you. Thank you for everything that you do to support children, to support educators, to support the administration and the parents, frankly, Brandywine High School.
Thank you again, Mr. Roth. Next, I would like to ask Principal Mark Mayer to come up as we celebrate and acknowledge the accomplishments. And Mr. Mayer will elaborate on those contributions from his building Teacher of the Year, Ms. Lori McRae, English teacher at Concord High School. Ms. McRae, would you please come up and join us as we celebrate you as well?
Good evening, President Sprobot, Superintendent Holder, respective board members and audience. I am proud to stand before you to recognize Concord High School's 2021-22 Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Lori McRae. As we all navigate this journey of life, we all hope to have a meaningful relationships that touch our hearts and soul. To do that, you have to have personal characteristics that draw people to you. Mrs. McRae has many of those characteristics as a person and as a teacher. Mrs. McRae is kind, patient, compassionate, caring, genuine, hardworking, unconditional, creative, committed and loyal. She is once a raider, always a raider. Mrs. McRae, McRae strives to help us create our vision of being an inclusive school community that is focused on building equitable systems of practice to prepare all students for the future. She lives out our mission of developing genuine relationships to connect as a school community. She lives out our motto, the conquered way. Helen Keller, Keller once said, "The best and most beautiful things in the world cannot be seen or even touched. They must be felt with the heart." That is Mrs. McRae. She touches our hearts. Congratulations to my colleague and my dear friend, Mrs. McRae.
And finally, for our last presentation tonight, we would like to invite Principal Chris Barr to come join us at the podium. She is going to be celebrating and telling you a little bit about her educator support professional as well as her Teacher of the Year. But, Will, are you good? Okay. We will begin with Ms. Lisa Welch. Ms. Welch, would you please come join us? She is her educator support professional and she is a paraprofessional in our district. Okay, all right. So, so you can tell us about her. We'll celebrate her and then we'll go on.
Going to make this load of the ground friendly. Good evening. My name is Chris Byer and I am Principal of the Bush Early Education Center and the Joe Brum Skill Early Childhood Assistance Program. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Board, thank you so much. I'd like to share that Lisa Welch is our ESP for Bush Early Education Center. Lisa demonstrates initiative and commitment to professional learning. She recently completed her RBT to become a Registered Behavior Technician. This process requires professionals to participate in 40 hours of professional development and then complete an exam. This certificate is above and beyond the expectations of her position. Lisa works with students with a variety of, of abilities and challenges. Her initiative in seeking this certification has enabled her to gain knowledge and skills to better support those students. She demonstrates commitment to professional development and evidence-based practices and approaches in the classroom. The Bush staff felt that she exemplified an exceptional employee and nominated her for the BSD Educator Support Person of the Year. She is recommended for initiative, professionalism and dedication to her students. And while she can't be here tonight to enjoy this evening, she did receive flowers at school and I would be happy to take for her, her gift back to her. So, thank you. And Lisa, congratulations. And now I get to say for my Teacher of the Year. I would like to recognize Laura Roper and ask her to come up here today to celebrate her Teacher of the Year for Bush Early Education Center and the Early Childhood Assistance Program. We share that. We share this honor together. Laura does teach at Bush and she has her family here with her tonight, her husband Charlie and daughter Laura, or, sorry, excuse me, daughter Jenna. So it's with great pleasure that I, I recognize Laura as Teacher of the Year for Bush Early Education Center. Laura is a continent professional and a master teacher. She truly understands child development and meets every student at their level. She programs for their individual needs and makes accommodations and modifications to program for them accordingly. Laura has been dedicated to continually developing and improving her teacher skills and has been part of the early childhood community for 28 years. Her, sorry, 29. She always corrects me. Her attention to detail is impeccable in planning for her students. Laura collaborates with related service staff to program to meet her students' needs. She is always eager to take extra responsibilities on and has always taken the initiative in preparing in services and activities. It can clearly be inferred that she embraces any opportunity for professional development and has strong leadership skills. In addition, she serves as a building team leader and as a teacher mentor to novice teachers. It's been my pleasure to be her immediate supervisor for over 20 years. So Laura, congratulations.
I'll put this back at the right place.
Thank you very much and congratulations to our support professionals and teachers of the year for your respective buildings. Certainly, I've said it time and time again, you know, most of us don't go to work for recognition and accolades, but it is important and it is well deserving for everything that you do for our students and for our district. So, thank you. And with that, we will move on to a superintendent's report. Superintendent Holder, general news and updates.
Good evening, members of the board, audience and virtual attendees. Want to start tonight by sharing two special celebrations that took place last week that have become traditions here in the Brandywine community. First is the Brandywine Hundreds Rotary Club's Flags for Heroes display on the corner of Mount Lebanon and Route 202, the home of the Brandywine School District Operations Center. Seeing all those flags representing family members of heroes directly connected to our community is sobering and leaves an indelible impression for reflection and thankfulness. The district was thrilled that the Flags for Heroes Project made a return this year. Veterans Day tributes occur throughout the district in honor of our service heroes, ranging from the playing of taps and moments of silence in buildings to more elaborate celebrations like that of Tally Middle School. In honor of Veterans Day, the Tally Band, Chorus and Orchestra all performed special patriotic performances to honor those who have served our country. It was the first time that these students have gathered to perform and they did a spectacular job. Please enjoy Tally Middle School's vocal and instrumental artists as they pay tribute to all current and past patriots who have served in the armed forces, protecting our democracy and preserving the liberties and freedoms that we enjoy as Americans.
Our school annually celebrates Veterans Day with a big school-wide concert. So we're trying to carry that on today in the best way we can in COVID times. So our eighth grade band, our sixth, seventh and eighth grade choirs and our seventh and eighth grade orchestra all prepared patriotic pieces of music to present in concert today. And so today we've been filming all of those performances to honor those who have served in the military so that we have the freedom to be here today and make these performances happen. When we started this several years ago, we had five or six veteran faculty members who were here and we all just sort of started a conversation one day around, "Wouldn't it be nice if we could do something to honor them?" And it just kind of boiled into the giant annual celebration that it has become. This is their first any kind of performance together as a large group in a big setting. And we're still having to sing over masks and sing spaced apart and play spaced apart. And the instrumental players are all still wearing masks. And to stand there today and see them rise to the occasion and, and really live up to the expectation of being a Tally leader, sharing that gift in a positive way with others. I think that just means the world to all of us here at Tally. We could not be prouder of them.
Again, special thanks to the Tally students and staff and causing all of us to reflect and remember the sacrifices of those that have served our great country. On our behalf, God bless our troops and God bless America. Next, I'd like to say thank you. Thank you to all the parents and staff that took the time last spring to provide constructive feedback in our communication survey. Our new public information officer, Danielle Pro Hudson, is using that information as the basis for our new communications and marketing strategy. With only five weeks on the job, she and Michaela and Austin have already started to implement changes based on your feedback. Those of you who follow us on social media, BSD's Facebook, Instagram and Twitter accounts have seen their handiwork. For those of you who haven't and aren't faithful followers yet, here's a quick video montage of what you're missing.
We organized this event in support of breast cancer awareness.
Today is our annual walkathon, which is also known as our Halloween parade.
Thank you to all Brandywine School District school nurses for the work that you do.
Ladies and gentlemen.
You know, you have the opportunity to really change lives through education and, and I was drawn to it ever since I never wanted to stop or do anything else.
And to stand there today and see them rise to the occasion, all of us here at Tally, we could not be prouder of them.
Our heart is at Brandywine and it always has been.
Wow, there is a lot happening in our schools. The best way to stay up to date is to follow us on Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. And be sure to like our posts so that our students see your interest and your support. As a reminder for our families, we continue to utilize the Brandywine School District COVID dashboard located on our website. This dashboard replaces the letters, emails and phone calls to families to alert them of cases of COVID in the buildings where their children are not deemed to be close contacts. As a reminder, any instance where your child is considered to be a close contact, you will continue to receive a personal phone call from the school nurse or building administrator. As a reminder, Brandywine School District follows all state mandates, including the COVID-19 related orders. Last week, Governor John Carney announced the mask mandate and all K-12 buildings would be extended through February. As you know, we will continue to follow this mandate. You may have also noticed in our opening video of our performing artists, the special masks that were purchased specifically for them. Needless to say, our students have done a wonderful job with their mask use and compliance. The district continues to basically monitor national, regional and local COVID data. Downward trend of the Newcastle County seven-day average of new cases per 100,000 persons reported last month continues, as does the Newcastle County trend in the seven-day average for positivity rate. We are hoping that these numbers continue to trend in this direction. With that said, we do have to wonder how family gatherings will impact spread data this year as Thanksgiving is right around the corner. The district has seen a steady decrease of total cases over the last two weeks and data from the state level also continues to show an incredibly low percentage of in-person contagious student cases in public schools that also shows favorable decline over the past several weeks. We're thrilled to report that we have, oh, I'm sorry. We are working closely with our state partners to implement mandatory testing for all school district employees who are not vaccinated as part of Governor Carney's executive order. All unvaccinated employees will have to participate in weekly COVID-19 testing and then upload their results into a secure portal. Staff members can utilize the Quidel testing that is already onsite at all of our school buildings throughout the week or they can find a community testing center if they so prefer. We are thrilled to report that we have an upcoming clinic for students between the ages of five and 11 for COVID vaccinations. The clinic will take place on November 29th for the first dose and December 20th for the second dose. This is in partnership with Albertson's Pharmacy. We will be communicating the details to our BSD families in the next few days if you would like to register. I also want to spotlight some of our team members who have been recognized in various ways. College and Career Readiness World Language and CTE Coordinator Vicki Sword was recently named the Vice Chair of Teaching and Learning of Culture Culture Special Interest Group for ACTFL. Vicki will also serve one year as Vice Chair and will be named Chair next school year. Meanwhile, middle school teacher at Tally Middle School, Renee Mercer, was recently served on the Educator Review Committee and helped to review, revise and rewrite the national standards in K-12 Personal Finance Education. And finally, our very own 2022 Delaware Teacher of the Year, Joshua Tabron, continues to shine. Both of Joshua's alma maters, Wilmington U and Delaware State University, as well as local media outlets have all shared Joshua's story. These are just a few of our team members who work, has put BSD on the state, regional and global map. Our hats off to all of them. So want to share some exciting news that will, will give you more detail about in the coming months. We're very excited to share with you that Brandywine received $2.6 million in federal grant monies out of a total of $6 million that went to the state from the FCC. This information, this, these funds will be used to help support our students' technology needs, both in school and especially at home based on socioeconomic status and availability to devices within the home. Quite a few impressive reasons to state, as I always do, proud to be BSD in my report this evening, but I save the best for last. The following is an email the Principal Keith Roth of BHS received this past week about one of his student athletes. The email reads, "Good afternoon. My name is Jen Avery and my son's name is Matthew Avery, an 11th grade cadet at Delaware Military Academy. I wanted you to be aware of an amazing display of sportsmanship my son experienced during the cross-country championship meet yesterday by one of your students, Bobby Bear. If you're not familiar with the course at Winnetor, it is a tough, hilly course peppered with deep ruts and dips. Around the mile and a half mark, Matthew hit one of those deep dips just the right way and twisted his ankle, causing him to fall to the ground. As Bobby ran up on Matthew laying on the ground, he stopped running to check on him. After helping Matthew back to his feet and making sure that he was okay, Bobby continued the race right by my son's side. Because of Bobby's actions yesterday, I'm sure it caused him to add a significant amount of time to his finishing time. It truly was a selfless act on Bobby's part and Matthew is extremely grateful. Please thank him again for us personally. Kindly, Jennifer Avery, parent." Ladies and gentlemen, that makes me especially proud to say I'm proud to be BSD. That is my report for this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Superintendent Holder. Any comments or questions from the board related to the superintendent's report? No? What a, what a great way to end with a story of sportsmanship like that. Thank you for sharing. Next up will be our public comment segment. We ask that our speakers and audience members, as always, be courteous and respectful of each other. This is your time to be heard regarding topics related to the Brandywine School District. Each speaker will have three minutes, at which time the microphone will shut off or will just simply thank you for your time. Please don't take it personally, just trying to make everything fair to everyone. And we do not have any Zoom participants this evening. So Ms. Scott, once the speaker starts speaking, if you could set the clock at three minutes, I'll call the first speaker and then I'll call the name for the on deck. And if the speakers could use the aisle microphone, that would be appreciated. First up, we have Dave Brady, followed by Carol Burge.
Good evening, board and whoever's left attendees. My name's Dave Brady. I live in Claymont. I was away from Claymont for the last two, three years, four years, but I'm back now. I attended a Claymont school. I entered in 1943 and I graduated in 1955 from the Claymont School. I went in the military and later on I went into, I went to Delaware U of D and I received my BA in History and my Master's in Counseling. And I began a career in Conrad High School as a career counselor. Anyhow, this story is, this is an old story. I've sat on this for 15 years. I was working at the time that this occurred at the Brandywine School District. I began here in 93. I was a visiting teacher, which persons deal with, with the truancy and school issues with children like that. And also what may be the want of- and also what may be the want of any principal that you may work with. And I, at the end, I was working with eight different schools, including Brandywine. Anyhow, long story short, I, I was at a meeting in December of '05, 2005. As I said, I sat on this story for a good while, and it's kind of gotten to me lately. I was at a meeting, and it was at the old Brandywine School District, District Office at the top of Pennsylvania Avenue. I was in there with a group. We had a teacher's day, and I, as a, one of two people in that slide I was in, and there were other people, a couple of teachers, social workers, so on and so forth. Anyhow, I was sitting beside this young fellow, and he, all of a sudden, he started into his story for the day. He told us that his, he had a course at Springer Junior High School, which taught, and this is it, taught that only white people are racist. You, you heard that right. Only white people are racist. That's what this young man was saying, the white boy from Springer Junior High. Well, I remonstrated with him. I said, you know, you gotta be kidding me. I've been around too long and this and that stuff. And anyhow, a black teacher from P.S. upon jumped in and said, well, you must be racist. After all my time, military, college, legislature, all that, I'm a racist. So anyhow, I got up from the meeting, walked over to my boss, Ms. Heltner, and she wasn't there, and I left a message with her secretary that I was leaving. I was going to resign as a January 31st of 2006.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Afraid we're done. Thank you. Carol Burge with Alan Benton on deck.
Hello, my name is Carol Burge. I'm a retired pediatric nurse and child and family counselor. Last month, I read the book Not My Idea, a book about white women. And this time, I'm going to read A is for Activist. There's a lot of talk last time about censorship. And I'm not talking about censorship. I'm not talking about taking books out of the library. My question is, why are books like this promoted on the Brandywine School District as family resources? A is for activist, advocate, abolitionist, ally, actively answering a call to action. Are you an activist? This is obviously a book for preschool children. L is for LGBTQ. Love who you choose, because love is true. Liberate your notions of limited emotions. Celebrate with pride our links of devotion. M is for megaphones, marching, movimented music, hip hip hooray. It must be May Day. In 1889, May Day was chosen for the International Workers' Day by socialists, communists, as well as anarchists, labor activists, and leftists in general around the world. N is for no. No, no, no. Yes to what we want. No to what must go. No, no, no. Open minds operate best. That's O. Critical thinking over tests. Wisdom can't be memorized. Educate, agitate, organize. In a previous, in the original version of this book, it wasn't organized. It was occupied. P is for PPP. Peace march. Pro, pro protest. Pow, pow, power to the PP people. Yah. T is for trans, for trains, tiaras, tulips, tractors, and tigers too. Trust in the true, the he, she, they, that is you. And lastly, Z is for Zapatasta, of course. Zapatasta is a libertarian socialist political militant group that controls a substantial amount of territory in southern Mexico. My question is, why are these books promoted on the Brandywine School District website, encouraging families to read with their children? Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Burge. Next up, we have Alan Benton, followed by Tonya Hetler.
Good evening. I wanted to respond to a letter that I saw online. I have a feeling you're going to be hearing about it soon. It is a letter from the Citizens for Brandywine School District. And I, I've read it. I think there's a lot of concerning things in it. And I just wanted to take the chance to say that, that I think it basically should be discounted. I, I wish I had time to, you know, respond to every single point individually. You know, there's, the, I guess the most concerning thing to me was a personal attack against a recently elected board member, which I really don't understand, and I feel that I need to once again remind everybody the results of the most recent election in which the, the winner, you know, got 72% of the vote compared to 27% for, for the other candidate. So I'm not really sure why we're choosing to attack this person in, in this forum and, you know, continue to ignore the fact that the majority of the district has spoken. And, you know, the platform that that candidate ran on, that is what the majority of the district, you know, wants. And that's what the majority of the district agrees with. I'd like to also point out a letter that the same group of people circulated. The last letter that they circulated got 147 people to sign on. But there was another letter that was signed by close to 500 people, expressing support for the way that history is taught in the district, for diversity inclusion efforts in the district. And, you know, if you do the math, the percentage-wise, it comes out to even more than the most recent election in which the prevailing candidate got 72% of the vote. So the people behind this letter, the people that are speaking month after month are in no way, they're loud, but they in no way represent a majority. Majority has spoken. Democracy has spoken. And I encourage you to commit this letter and it, and the ideas in it to the ashbin of history where it belongs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benton. Next up, Tonya Hetler, followed by Ken Darjes.
Hi, actually, he introduced this well. I, we did just send, as the board knows, a letter regarding the FOIA documents that we received from the board, so that if you want to discount them, it's stuff that's actually being used in the district. But if you're interested in reading the letter, you can go to www.tonyathedoc.com, and it's on the front page there. So we're waiting for a response from the board and looking forward to a chance to meet with you to discuss some of the things that we found in the FOIA documents. FOIA is Freedom of Information Act, by the way. So on a slightly different topic, I wanted to tell you about a study that I just read about in K through 12 districts that have diversity, equity, and inclusion directors, like Brandywine School District does. The stated purpose of a DEI officer is to close the achievement gaps between students in advantaged and disadvantaged groups. And we think that this is an excellent and admirable goal. The question is, does having a DEI officer like Brandywine has narrow the achievement gaps between minorities and whites? The answer is no. This is from a Stanford study. In fact, having a DEI officer is associated with wider achievement gaps between minorities and the majority group. We could ask whether perhaps this is just because in districts where there is more of a need for an achievement, or a need for a DEI officer, there is a bigger achievement gap. However, the findings do not support this. When they looked at it over time annually, in districts where there is a DEI officer, the achievement gaps between white students and minority students actually get bigger annually. So why is this happening? The social justice ideology that lies behind the DEI officer actually tells black students that they cannot achieve as well as white students can. They are told that they are victims and oppressed. Does this seem like it would increase their achievement scores? I don't think so. When social justice is the focus, the standards are actually lowered for minority students. And when standards are lowered, the students are going to perform down to that new standard. This is the case, unfortunately, in Brandywine School District, where only 53% of seniors are college and career ready. This is based on the district's own numbers, and yet 87% of students graduate. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hitler. Next up, we have Ken Darjes, followed by Joan Prorock.
At the last board meeting, a number of parents got up and talked about the performance of the students in mathematics, English, which seemed to be extremely low, 41%, 53% college-ready when they graduate. The reaction from the superintendent was to talk about a three-year plan and pointed out that we now have a new social studies guru. Reverend Perry mentioned that we have a, a new equity Zarina. And I'm sitting there as a parent and trying to figure out how these two adds to our staffing are going to improve our math and English grades, but I'm just a parent. I'd like to talk about the new free facility. The school I attended, we had some very complex problems thrown at us as far as projections, et cetera. One of the easiest ones, though, was dealing with budgeting and budget projections. What I haven't seen from the board, and maybe that's because it hasn't been created, and maybe I haven't looked in the right place, is the budgeting that's going to go into this free school. We need staffing, maintenance, maintenance improvements, et cetera. Hopefully, the board isn't thinking something along the line that, once we get this new free facility, that when we come up with all these extra costs, that we can go back to the people and ask for a tax increase. Based on the performance of the schools, this school district, over the last two tax increases, I think we're going to run into a great deal of resistance, as people are going to learn about the 41% and the 53% numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Darjes. Joan Prorock, followed by Carrie Flanagan.
In Montana, the superintendent of schools asked the Montana Attorney General to provide information on the legality of teaching social justice ideology. He cited past case law and applied the law to the current ideas of social justice, CRT, anti-racism, and equity, which are being promoted in K through 12 schools today across the nation, including the Brandywine School District. The AG's reply specified that aspects of social justice violate the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution and Title VI, Article II, Section 4 of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. He briefly traced the history of race-related law back to James Madison, who said that government by consent emerged because it is the only arranged arrangement capable, compatible with the premise of natural equality. He continued with a statement from Justice Sean Marshall Harlan, "Our Constitution is colorblind, and neither knows nor tolerates classes among citizens. Colorblindness has been the prevailing idea in Supreme Court decisions through our history, from Plessy versus Ferguson decision to Brown versus Board of Education to the present." The AG mentioned that the purpose of the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment is to prevent the states from purposely discriminating between individuals on the basis of race. He continued citing, "The equal protection principle reflects our nation's understanding that racial classifications ultimately have a destructive impact on the individual and our society." Referring to the same case, Justice Antonin Scalia said, "In the eyes of the government, we are just one race here. It is American." Finally, he wrote, "The Title VI of the 1964 Civil Rights Act protects all students who attend institutions receiving federal funding from being treated differently based on their actual or perceived race, color, or national origin. The belief behind social justice ideology that more discrimination today is a solution to past discrimination is illogical and illegal."
Thank you, Ms. Prorock. Carrie Flanagan, followed by Donna Lee.
Hi, thank you for being here this evening. My name is Carrie Flanagan. My two children attend grade school in the district, and I want to thank the district for being so adaptive and working so hard to keep our kids learning while also keeping them safe. It's been a difficult two years, and I want to especially thank the teachers, food service workers, nurses, bus drivers, and admin who nurture our kids every day. I truly appreciate you. I want to encourage people to get their kids vaccinated. I did. The science on these vaccines has been in development for decades. And lastly, I want to say I support BSD's work on diversity and inclusive education. I've spoken to my children about racial dynamics regularly since they were children little, and never have they been made to feel badly about themselves. Instead, they are learning compassion, empathy, curiosity, and that all humans all deserve the same thing, to be treated with respect. I hope BSD will continue to give our teachers the training and resources they need to teach all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flanagan. Next up, Donna Lee, followed by James Ingrazia.
We, as a society, are killing our children. We're responsible for allowing fear to permeate their lives, for handing our children over to others to be scolded and raised. We have allowed evil to penetrate all aspects of our lives. It's time for us to say no. So please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we have turned from you and rebelled against you. Instead of honoring you, we bow down before all manner of idols. We have taken you out of our schools and public places. We have allowed fear to rule our lives. Merciful God, I pray you will open the eyes and hearts of parents, teachers, and citizens. Help us see what a disaster we have created with our own hands. Help us boldly move from faith, from fear, to faith, and be role models for our children. And take the masks off. Let our children see smiles again. Let them experience love, not hate, for themselves and for others. Give them confidence by teaching them to read, to write, to speak, and to think critically. Destroy these abominable curriculums. Please, God, give us the courage to say no more. I ask this in the name, in the name of your Son, Jesus. Please join me in saying the Lord's Prayer together. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Next up, James Ingrazia, followed by Richard Smith.
School districts across the country continue to proclaim that they do not teach the racially obsessed grievance ideology known as CRT, what it likes thereof. Parents of us America have been getting involved to hold schools accountable to that statement. Teachers and staff have for years been immersed in the many euphemistic words of politically motivated indoctrination. The unique perspective of the parents must be recognized. We are on the outside looking in. The fact is, our schools are failing the children on an academic level. Students are at or below fifty percent proficiency in English, math, science, and social studies. And this is before the abysmal COVID results were reported. To quote California Teacher of the Year Jeremy Adams, "I think people are starting to wake up to the fact that ninety percent of student success has nothing to do with the future. It has to do with the values, the habits, the background, and the support that those young people have before they ever get to a school." The school's role is to teach academics and may reinforce values by way of doing to others as you would have them do unto you. It is a parent's job to teach their children core values such as respecting others, responsibility, honesty, gratitude, and compassion. Resist the harmful effects this divisive ideology can have on students and preserve honest patriotic education. If you don't stand for something, then you will fall for anything.
Thank you, Mr. Ingrazia. Richard Smith. Thought I saw him leave earlier. Freeman Williams. Yeah, it looks like that concludes our public comment session. Moving on to board liaison reports. Delaware School Boards Association and Executive Board, Mr. Ralph Ackerman.
Yeah, the Delaware School Board Association met on November third. We did have a quorum. We had a presentation from Christie Lloyd from the Department of Education on cybersecurity and ransomware defense. That's the name I was trying to remember earlier. A very timely presentation, and certainly one that's very important. We also had a presentation from Mr. Simmons, as well as John Sheehan, to kind of give the boards across the state kind of an overview of the plan that we just heard tonight from the governor. The question that I'd like to just pose to board members and that we've kind of charged ourselves with going back to our individual boards. The National School Boards Association had, on its own, sent a letter to President Biden asking for help with items that we didn't feel was appropriate. We don't think parents are terrorists. We think that we should listen to parental input as a board and as the School Boards Association. So I think the question that I'm posing to board members is, when you get a chance, you know, if you feel compelled, give me your feelings on whether or not the Delaware School Boards Association should continue to be a member of NSBA, or should we leave NSBA? I mean, we all, most of us here have gone to at least one NSBA conference, and I think we found a lot of value in that conference. But it is a question. I think about twenty-six states have so far left the organization, if I have the number correct. We did not decide to take any action with regards to NSBA membership, but we do want to come back to our local boards and say, what, you know, what do you want to do? Do you, you know, what's your direction as a board member? How do you feel about NSBA? And should we look to leave NSBA? There is a new organization being spun up by the Pennsylvania School Boards Association. I'm not sure how many states are involved with that at this point, but there are several states that are looking to form an alternative organization to NSBA. At this point, I mean, Delaware's contribution, our dues for NSBA are de minimis compared to big states like Texas or California. I mean, we literally pay under ten thousand dollars a year to belong to NSBA. And you have states that are giving, you know, hundreds and millions of dollars with staffs that are oftentimes bigger than NSBA. So, you know, personally, I think you don't leave, you stay and fight. That's kind of my position, but I'm certainly willing to take input from our board, and we are going to revisit this topic at our next meeting, which I believe will be in January.
Has the DSBA, do they kind of have a list of pros and cons of what, you know, what we what we gain from NSBA aside from the conference?
Actually, that question was asked by several members in attendance. And Dr. Marinucci said oftentimes they provide legal assistance with questions. They can also provide help with superintendent searches. There's a numerous items that they do, but I can certainly ask him to provide us with a list that I can get out to board members.
And would any of those items, could the DSBA source some of those resources with the ten thousand? We would save a fraction of whatever, but something to consider.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great. Thank you. Delaware School Boards Association Legislative Committee, Ms. Gordon.
Although I attend the executive committee with Mr. Ackerman, the legislative committee has not met and will not be meeting again until February sixth.
Great, thank you, Ms. Gordon. District Finance Committee. The District Finance Committee held its monthly meeting on November tenth. We reviewed the monthly financial report as well as a discussion on the class size waivers, both of which Dr. Hale will present shortly. And our next scheduled meeting is for December eighth at five P.M. Maintenance Advisory Committee, Mr. Heller, who was not with us. I attended that meeting as well. That was on Tuesday, November ninth. We met at Forewood Elementary School, reviewed some of the ongoing projects of anyone's high school cafeteria, along with Mount Pleasant High School and facilities, the facilities building. With much of the nation, we're still waiting on supplies and materials that are delayed. As always, John Reed and his team took advantage of students out of the building on Thursday and Friday of last week or of that week, you know, to make a push to get items completed in the school, take advantage of the time when the students are not there. More work is lined up for the Thanksgiving break. We are at the end of our funding for our 2016 referendum. There will be some project closeouts and audits completed with, in relation to the referendum dollars. There are some pending projects at Brandywine High School, Mount Pleasant, High School, Mount Pleasant E., Carcroft, Maple Lane, and Tally, related to some of the S.R. funding and the facilities there. Continued long-term planning and discussion with the state regarding minor cap funding. Wish I would have taken the time with the governor while he was here tonight to mention this. But we have, over the last eighteen years, minor cap funding from the state has increased by fourteen percent. So over eighteen years, fourteen percent increase in funding compared to a one hundred and thirty-three percent increase in the cost per square foot to complete minor cap projects within districts in our state. So the funding has not kept pace with inflation and the cost of what it actually takes to get jobs completed. So we will continue to work with the state and our local legislators to try to increase the minor cap funding that will allow us to maintain our schools, you know, do a nice renovation in an auditorium like this. And the minor cap money helps us maintain it and extend the life over the years. And our next meeting, I think we're not going to have a December meeting. We will propose a January meeting, and I'll have a date for everyone at the next board meeting. Parent Council for Students with Disabilities, Ms. Pidgen.
So the last meeting was held on October twenty-seventh. It's held via Zoom. There will be three additional meetings throughout the rest of this twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So the third Wednesday of the month, so in January, March, and May. And they're from six-thirty to eight P.M. This past meeting was kind of a get-to-know-you meeting, getting to know the parents, getting to know each other, because a lot of the parents are selected to participate in the parent council. Of course, it is open to any parent that would like to participate, but there are certain key parents selected from each school. And then they are also, the Special Education Department is also working, doing connect and learn workshops, family workshops. And those are for families that are maybe new to the special education process. And they're held throughout the year, and all the information for those meetings can be found at the school with your educational documentation or online on Facebook, on the Parent Council Facebook page.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pidgen. Parents and Citizen Advisory Committee, Reverend Perry is not here. I do not believe there was a meeting for that yet, and I do not have a date for the next one. Health Advisory Committee, Mr. Heller. I do not have an update for that report. Ninety-one, seven WMPH Advisory Committee did hold a meeting on Monday, November eighth. The broadcasting has been twenty-four, seven, as normal. This year's WMPH After School Club has been quite popular and increased in popularity over previous years. They've continued as a station to broadcast fall sports, football, volleyball, and field hockey, and will continue to do so with basketball into the winter. We discussed the ongoing contract with Delaware Public Media. Currently, some of the recommendations by the committee are being reviewed by legal before being presented to the board for consideration. Hope to have that in the December or January meeting. Completed some compliance items, such as reports for the National Emergency Alert System. And some FCC compliance training was completed. And we will be working on WMPH Broadcast Licensing Renewal. That application is due August of next year, twenty-twenty-two, and that covers an eight-year period. And our next meeting is scheduled for next quarter, March seventh of twenty-twenty-two. Educator and Recruitment and Retention Committee, Ms. Stock.
Yes, the Educator, Recruitment, and Retention Committee has not met since our last meeting. However, we are looking to schedule a meeting for early December. So again, I'm asking educators, public, if you are interested in coming to that meeting in early December, you can send me an email at Kimberly, Kimberly dot stock at BSD dot K to child dot D E dot U S. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stock. Any additional board member reports or comments?
Do have a question, Mr. President. For WMPH, how was the reaction from DPM on the suggestions to reduce their time a little bit?
We haven't presented those yet. We're working on the contract that will then be presented to them once the board approves the language for submission to have those negotiations. Perfect. Pardon me. And that concludes board member reports. Consent Agenda. I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Personnel Matters. This was an amended version to the agenda. So we will start with, do I have a motion? Motion to approve the monthly personnel report as discussed in executive session. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight B. Employee, do I have a motion to approve employee matter twenty-two dash zero one as discussed in executive session? So moved. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight C. Do I have a motion to approve employee matter twenty-two dash zero two as discussed in executive session?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Student Matters. Do I have a motion to approve student matters as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second? Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. There is no old business this evening. New business. Dr. Hale, can we hear from you on the waiver of provision Title fourteen, Section C, commonly known as class-size waiver?
It's great, thank you. Good evening, members of the board. The information that was presented to you in the in the board for this evening is in relation to Title fourteen, Section seventeen oh five, which basically states that in grades kindergarten through three, classes must be at a enrollment of twenty-two or less, or if any classes are exceeding that number that do not have what's considered to be additional supports in the class, we would be required to come to the board and seek a waiver of that class-size requirement. The information that's presented to us is as of the first of November. And I had indicated in a written notice to the board that we were performing an analysis of all of the classrooms that are impacted through that K-three. And even as early or as late as this morning, part of that process that we go through is looking at every classroom, looking at what additional supports are available within those buildings, and looking at those numbers to see that whether those additional supports would provide us the opportunity to not have to seek a waiver. And I am pleased to say that, based on our analysis and some additional positions that we've been able to afford through our S.R. grant, we will not be seeking a waiver this year of the class sizes for any of those K through three. So, you know, we've spent the last two weeks, the reason that this is on the board, we have to put it on every year because of the requirement for it to be posted and has to be up for a certain period of time. And because the information becomes available to us on November first, we do take that time and go through extensively all of the classrooms and speak with the principals. Vina Davis was involved. Mr. Holder, yes, we've been going through those conversations and even up through today, looking at enrollments even through today to see where we were to ensure that that any of the funds that we would be using to provide additional resources would be done so, you know, with good stewardship. So again, I am pleased to report that we will not be seeking the waiver this year. And I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So do we need to take a vote to accept your recommendation that you're not making a recommendation?
You would not have to. I don't believe that there would have to be any action on this because we have been able to indicate through the survey that's provided through Class Links that we've met the requirement. As far as I understand, nothing further is necessary.
Well, I do appreciate your time and all the time of the district admin and the individual school administrators that have worked to, I know not only this year, but in years past, to, you know, build out the classrooms to where we do not need the class-size waiver. I don't think we've had one in my time on the board, and I think that's a great area of pride for me and as a district that, you know, we're able to maintain, you know, class sizes with, within the framework of Title fourteen and not have to exceed that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Hale, just to be clear, that does not mean that we don't have classes that may have twenty-three or twenty-four students in them.
That is correct.
But the classes that do. But the, the classes that do also have access to additional support, or we are in the process of hiring
Yes.
individuals as additional support.
That is correct. Yeah. So as we go through that process, we review every classroom, even those that have less than the 22, to look at additional support to the needs of the buildings, and that's part of our allocations process. So as we go through and make those determinations and provide those buildings with the resources, they would then go through the process to ensure that they have the necessary staff in place. So all of the staffing has been allocated, you know, for those buildings to ensure that any of those classes that have in excess of 22 have additional supports that meet the code.
And am I correct in the fact that our average class size K to three is lower than it's been in the last? I can't remember.
So out of the 145 classes that we have in that K through three, this is the first time that we've been under 20 average. So it's roughly 19.95 is our, is our average. And certainly that's something that we review on a daily basis. That average was as of the first of, of November. And as we know, each day, you know, there could be students added to that and certainly students that could come off. So it's something that we continually look at throughout the year to ensure that, you know, as additional students come into the district that we're providing the additional resources necessary to, to meet the needs.
And Mr. Scrub, I'd like to commend Dr. Hale and, and Ms. Jones Davis. Not only did they look at the November 9th data, which they're required to, but as Dr. Hale reported, they actually pulled data from today. And even though wouldn't have to take classes that exceeded that number today, but not on November 9th into consideration, but they did anyway, which to me, I just speaks to their commitment to keep that class-sized number as, as low as possible.
Thank you, Superintendent. Dr. Hale, Ms. Pidgen brought to my attention that this is listed as an action item. So I will consult with Robert's Rules of Order later, but for now I will entertain a motion to direct Dr. Hale to take the appropriate district action in lieu of not requiring a class-sized waiver.
Thank you. So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And we want to jump out of order. Do you want to do financials or John Reed next? Let's go, let's stay in order. We'll do minor cap improvements. Mr. John Reed.
Good evening. That's kind of disrupted his mojo here by getting in the middle here. The, the Brandywine School District has retained the services of an architect of record, but it's more than just an architect. That team has civil engineers, mechanical engineers, structural engineers. So when we have a minor issue in the school, these are the teams, the professionals that we lean on. They're also the teams of professionals that help us through permits. When we got the lights here at Brandywine High School, there were permits involved. We went out for requests for proposals. We had six firms submit, and our recommendation is to award the contract to two firms, but we were going to divide up the school based on the firm's personnel's expertise of those individual buildings. ABHA, which is a firm that is located in the city of Wilmington, would handle all minor cap work, NESSERT work for the next three years of Brandywine High School, Concord High School, Mount Pleasant High, PS Dupont, Springer Middle School, Tally Middle School, Claymont Elementary, Harlan Elementary and Maple Lane. BSA plus A, which is also located in the city of Wilmington, would be awarded Carcroft Elementary, Forewood Elementary, Hamby Elementary, Lancashire Elementary, Lombardi Elementary, Mount Pleasant Elementary, any work that would pop up at the bus yard, the Brandywine Operations Center, Darley Road, 1000 Pennsylvania Avenue, that after the work there, if anything arose, and also some of our miscellaneous properties. Any major work coming up in the next few years would not be included in this. So the New Bush School is a separate RFP, which by the way is out right now for advertisement and firms are preparing for that now. This is for minor cap work only and for asset projects only for the next three years. Any questions?
Street, just what's the rationale with going with two firms?
Um, it was, we have a lot of little projects and a lot of the architect firms in Delaware are very busy on big projects right now. And although they're little projects, they're very important to us. So we felt that it helped to band with. Also with personnel, the BSA plus A team has recently retained the services of an architect who came from another firm, who is a lead architect for Hamby, Lancashire and Carcroft. And BSA plus A has, had worked on Mount Pleasant Elementary in the past and these other sites in the past. So when I pick up the phone and call these firms, it's not like they have to come visit me for the drawings. They already have them on their network. So when problems arise, for instance, last Tuesday night, the water line broke in front of Claymont. You know, we had kids the next day, no one knew it, because we're able to respond very quickly, have access to drawings, and we're able to get on this quickly, and it's our intention to continue with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I appreciate the, the thought that you and your team put into thinking of these things, and these are the details that go to helping things run smooth, keeping operations going, keeping students in the building when there's a flood the night before and they don't even know. So thank you very much. Any other questions on the board? Oh, do I have a motion to accept the architect of record?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any objections? All those. I lost track of my thought here. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Back to Dr. Hale for the monthly financial report.
Just thank you. Just be a moment as we put it up on the screen. Here we go. It's good evening. The District Finance Committee met last Wednesday to review the reports for the month ended October 31st, 2021. As I stated, this is the report that really is the most significant of the year as we receive the most significant portion of our tax revenue during the month of October. So if we could go to page one of the report, the revenue listed, as you can see, we continue to hold as it relates to our state funding. Now that our September 30th unit count has been finalized, we will begin the process of formulating the final budget. The District Finance Committee and the board will be presented with a draft of the final budget next month for consideration in January. We will begin to receive over the course of the next several months, the remaining funds from the state as it relates to our finalized unit counts. We'll be able to provide all of that additional information. You can see that on the, on the current expense that we've received roughly $59 million of our total allocation of current expense dollars over the course of the next several months, we'll begin to see that, that remaining portion come through. I mean, we certainly have every expectation to believe that we're going to receive 100% of those funds for the year. Our next page shows our expenditure report. Through October 31st, we're seeing relatively standard expenditures up to this point. I mean, certainly last year being through COVID, you know, we, we are seeing some more average-type expenditures up to this point. So what we're looking at at this point is. Okay, got you. So the expenditures to date for the buildings, I mean, certainly the, the building principals are doing a great job as it relates to managing their budgets as well as looking at our various departments. All of our expenditures, you know, as we review them each day, you know, the October 31st report is reflective of pretty much where we would normally be at the end of October. So this is something that over the course of the next several months, as we're looking at our final budget, we'll be doing an analysis of our expenditures to see if there's any, any budgets or operating units that we would need to make an adjustment. The key factor for us, as we always report on, is the, where we are with the year as it relates to our salaries. We currently have been nine out of our total of 26 pay cycles, which is roughly about 35%. So as we're tracking right now, roughly about 36% of our total. Certainly over the course of the next several months, we should see that number smoothed out a bit. So that, that's reflective of us being right on target to where we need to be with our budget. This report is our operating expenditure report for prior year appropriations. And again, this is for any of the funds that we receive that are coded for budgets years 2021 or earlier. So we report these on a monthly basis. And again, a majority of these expenditures are related to things like federal programs as well as a major and minor cap expenditures. Now, there are some funds that we do receive from the state that are fiscal year '21 or earlier appropriations, and all those would be accounted for on this. We had fairly extensive discussions during the District Finance Committee as it relates to our S or 2 and 3 expenditure summary. So it was a recommendation of that group that we provide over the course of the next several months, an additional expenditure. You know, whether it be through various charts or like additional information to begin to go into further detail as it relates to what type of expenditures are coming through. So we'll certainly be working with various individuals at the, in the district to make sure that, that we are providing information to the public that provides greater detail as it relates to that total of $36 million that we receive. And again, that's over the course of three years. So we will be working through the District Finance Committee to be able to provide additional reports that will be able to further explain how those expenditures are taking place. Our cash flow statement, as you can see, the first three months there are actual expenditure, or I should say four months. Moving on to the next page, based on the information that we have received through October, we're still anticipating to have roughly $10.3 million on June 30th of '22 in our budget. In the preliminary budget, we had anticipated $10.4 million. So just basically a slight adjustment. We are dealing with lower-than-expected-interest revenue as it relates to the state's investment portfolios. That's something that the District Finance Committee has been looking at, and will make necessary adjustments as we go through the final budget. So basically, we are holding tight at our estimated $10.3 million carry forward for June 30th. And I would answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Any questions from the board regarding the monthly financial report? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the monthly financial report for October 31st, 2021, subject to audit.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Hale.
Thank you.
General information and meeting dates. We will have our next board meeting here at Brandywine High School on December 13th, followed by January 10th, 2022, followed by February 7th, 2022. Is that February 7th date correct? That early in the month? I know, I know the 10th moves, I think, because of, Martin Luther King Day the following week. We can always, we can always come back to confirm that date, but certainly.
I have January 10th down.
The February, is that the 7th?
February. I'm sorry.
Okay. Great. Those will be our meeting dates. And I want to thank everyone for your time and participation this evening. Hope everyone has a safe and enjoyable Thanksgiving holiday. Always reminded of, it's not about having what you want, but wanting what you have. And I hope everyone takes the time to give thanks. I think we can all find one thing that we are thankful for, and I hope everyone does that. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.